I'd like to call to order the July 11, 2017 session of the Hazel Park City Council. Roll call.
Mayor Keaton.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
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 Okay, that brings us to the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
If you please stand for the invocation.
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand to set aside our own personal agendas to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda council. It's your pleasure.
So moved, Mayor. Support.
Motion is made and supported. Is there a discussion on the motion? Being none. Dissension to the motion? Being none. The motion carries. We have an agenda. Special presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Judge Chuck Gaddert from the 43rd District Court, Hazel Park Division, is here for purposes of an invitation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, and thank you very much, City Manager. As you know, our City Hall and courthouse construction and renovation project is now substantially complete. I'm still working on a few punchless items, but we hope to have most of those completed within a month. I want to again thank all of you for your support for this project from its inception, as we could not have done it without you and your support. The goals that we set out to achieve, and that I think we did accomplish, were drastically needed, and I think that the outcome is exceptional. For example, among the many benefits, this project has dramatically increased the efficiency of court operations. Folks who have a case before the court no longer need to wait four to six months or more before they even get their first court date. And when they do attend, they're spending less time before their case is called. So I talked with the City Manager about being able to show our facilities to the public, and we've decided on having a ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house on Friday, August 11th, next month, beginning with the ribbon-cutting ceremony at 3:00 in the afternoon and an open house to go from 3:00 to 5:00. I'm sincerely hoping that all of you are able to attend the ribbon-cutting and to come to the open house and get a tour of our new facilities if you haven't already seen the facilities. And I'm sincerely hoping that the good people of the city of Hazel Park will also come and take a tour of our facility, see what we've done here. And again, that's on Friday, August 11th, from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. We will have some light refreshments. And no, no adult beverages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have more.
(laughter)
We have civic announcements. We have our County Commissioner, Lane Zach, here.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to just illustrate what I do as your county commissioner. On Wednesday, July 19, 7:00 PM, Brooks Patterson is going to present the annual three-year Oakland County budget, and this is the book that I have to review. I serve on Finance Committee. And just some quick overview, it is a balanced three-year budget. In the last couple of years, the millage rate was cut. It was in 2016, a half of .5, and 2015, earlier than it could have been, there was a .1 mil or .10, I'm sorry, it's .1 and .05 mil cut ahead of the headly override. And I don't want to go through the complexity of explaining why, but we are going to have a millage cut probably again in 2019 and 2021. And what's happening is that our taxable value, our real estate, is going up. It's 3.67% overall, greater than it was last year, but the taxable value doesn't go up. This is why our revenue is flat, but we see this countywide, too.
Did you want to say the system of local government finance in Michigan is fundamentally broken, Commissioner?
Yes, I do agree with you. But, so, in any case, budget hearing is, I welcome people to the county complex to hear the presentation of the budget. You can have the pleasure of falling asleep and reading this online if you would like, but the summary, some of the highlights are really valuable information. I do want to tell you about a business conference that the Board of Commissioners is hosting along with the Economic Development Department, and it is on Wednesday, August 9, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, at the Oakland County Executive Office Building, which is 2100 Pontiac Lake Road, Waterford, Michigan. And this is really designed for businesses to learn how you can contract with the county and do business with the county. And so, the goal is, how do you learn to become a registered vendor with Oakland County? How do you access one-stop business centers, tools, explore financing options, connect with Oakland County job placement, Oakland County Works? And so I do encourage people to look into this. If you need more information, you can go to advantageoakland.com, and there's more details there. For those of you that have Bridge Cards, which is state-of-Michigan subsidized funding at several Oakland County markets, you can get what I call double-up bucks. So if you use $10 of your Bridge Card, it will be doubled for fresh fruit and vegetables. And the closest farmer's market that will take that near here is Lathrop Village, and that's on Wednesday afternoons from 3:00 to 7:00. And then the Oakland County Market in Waterford also uses this double-up. I had hoped that we could do it more in South Oakland County, but it's food for thought for next year.
Let's not wait till next year. This year, the Hazel Park Farmer's Market on Sundays from 10:00 to 2:00 every year is also participating in the double-up bucks program.
Yes, it wasn't on my list. Congratulations.
Sorry that it was not on your list, but they are participating.
I'm thrilled to hear that, but it's really wonderful to know that you can get fresh fruits and vegetables. I'm glad to hear you're part of it. It wasn't in my...
And again, I would encourage everybody to come out to our wonderful and growing every week Farmer's Market, because you can take advantage of this important program and double your bucks if you purchase fresh fruit. And we do have farmer, several farmers in fact onsite, who are selling fresh fruit, so it's a really great opportunity to really maximize your benefit. Sorry.
No, I'm glad that I prompted that information. So that's it for this evening. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we also have Steffi here from Ferndale Friends, who has an important presentation as well.
All righty.
Thanks. Hi, Stephanie Lovelace, publisher of Ferndale Friends magazine. Just about a year ago, when Beth Holland and Richard Robbins came to us and asked us to produce the 75th Anniversary Guide for the city, and I'm so glad you did, really proud to have been asked to produce the book. I hope everybody's happy with it. About a month now, and if anybody needs a copy, we still have a few hundred left. I especially want to thank all of the businesses in town, who are really great to work with, about 200 ads in the paper, really great support from the businesses. Everybody at City Hall was fantastic, and I want to thank our staff of writers and the delivery team and photographer, Bernie LaFon, who lives here in town. And I especially want to thank three people, Lynda Yono, could not have done the book without her, and then Richard Robbins wrote this fantastic history of the city in the book, and then Beth Holland, just couldn't have done the book without you. So again, thank you very much for letting us do the book, and I hope everybody's happy with what we came up with. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Yes.
It turned out very well, didn't it? It's nice to look.
Steffi, the ads, they pop. The ads make the paper interesting to read, and it's real nice. And Richard is going to be happy to straighten out the history of the name of Hazel Park.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
All right, civic announcements. We have Lion Peggy Burleson.
My name is Lion Peggy Burleson. I'm Secretary of the Hazel Park Lions Club. I thank the Mayor, Council, City Manager for allowing me to come tonight. Before I, I have certificates to pass out, but before that, I would like to explain a little bit about Lions Clubs. Lions Club International is in Chicago.
Mr. Mayor, Peggy, pull the microphone down just a little. There you go.
Okay, I'm not used to that. Lions Club International is located in Chicago, Illinois. And Lions International Clubs are celebrating 100 years as the largest, I believe, organization in the world. They were formed in June of 1917. We have 1.35 million Lion members and 46,000 Lion Clubs, and we are in over 200 countries. Hazel Park Lions Club became forming on December 12, 1947, and we were sponsored by the Royal Oak Lions Club. And this year, our Lions Club will be celebrating 70 years here in Hazel Park. And we would like to thank the city, the businesses, the residents, because without everyone in the city, and as we all know, Hazel Park is the friendly city. We thank you all for your support for where we have come. Tonight, I am here because our Lions Club had their 17th Annual Lion Harold Brennizer Memorial Golf Outing. This was done in May. We had 48 golfers, and we had 50 sponsors throughout our city, and we really appreciate all their help. I would like to, first of all, before I do my counsel, I would like to thank the Hazel Park Police Department for sponsoring, the Hazel Park Fire Department, the Hazel Park School Board and District. And I've already seen our City Manager, Ed, and I've already gave him his plaque, but he and his wife also sponsor a golf hole for our outing. Our golf outing is led by Lion Gary Chamberlain. He is a 20-year Lion member, and he has headed this up for 17 years. He has done a fantastic job, and we thank him. Our golf outing goes for sponsoring four scholarship, three scholarships. It's a four-year scholarship, and it's $500 for each year. So tonight, first of all, I would like to give my first plaque to the Hazel Park City Council. And what we do is we have these balls that we have made out. They do not get the balls back. We keep them, and every year, we take all 50 sponsors out to the golf course, Rackham Golf Course, and these are put out around all the holes, and they stay out all day for advertisement. So Mayor Keaton, I would like to say thank you, and we appreciate the council for everything that they do. Would you do the honor of passing them out for me?
I will.
All right. Okay. The next one is our City Attorney, Arnold Schiffman. The next one will be Councilman Tom Salmon. And I know this young lady is not with us tonight, but Janet Drum, our City Attorney. And I also have one for Jeff Campbell.
Thank you, sir.
She ain't here, she's just so tan, she blended in the back.
Oh. I'm sorry. No. Wait a minute. I get confused as it is. The other one that I would like to give to is to Councilman Mike Webb and his wife, Robbie, and Taylor Auto Maintenance for sponsoring one of our businesses. We thank you very much. If it was not for all the people in Hazel Park, businesses, schools, city, we would not be where we are today. I have brochures up here, if anyone would like to have a brochure to see what our Hazel Park Lions are into, who we sponsor, and that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do, Peggy. Yeah, thank you.
As I understand, there's no other civic announcements?
Mr. Mayor, we do have Stephanie. She has returned.
(inaudible). I'm sorry, I don't like to speak in public. But anyway, $1,865 for the Historical Society's contribution for the cause. I almost walked out without reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you. (applause)
Watch this.
Hi, Rich.
Okay, we have any other civic announcements? I don't, we have one.
This has been coming for a while, but starting here in Hazel Park on July 31st and running through August 18th, will be the recycle carts rollout. This has been coming, planning for a few years, but the bins for recycling will be replaced by the carts, and you will no longer have to separate the paper from the glass and the plastic and the metal. It'll all, it's called single-stream recycling, and all the carts are started, slated to be started rolling out here in Hazel Park on July 31st. Start using them as soon as you get them. If you have any questions, there's, you can go online, there'll be brochures about what's recyclable in with the carts, there'll be a label on it, but you can go online to sacra.org and find that out. But starting July 31st, we'll be getting the carts. So that's all I got.
Mayor, since we're on recycling, and all the, if you've noticed around town, we have the new garbage cans, those are 100% recyclable product that has been purchased through our foundation, through Land Care, and the contributions that we earned off of that, part of the money's come from there and as well from other areas. And I think they're looking good, which got to change some of the image of those old rusty cans out there, and I think it's turned out to be a positive move. Thank you.
And speaking of trash, again, I want to let the residents of Hazel Park know, obviously, we have a new trash collection company, GFL. They're in their, this was their second week to pick up trash. There was a little bit of a delay this week, as one of the trucks was in an accident and ruptured a fuel line, and we assisted that company with the cleanup. So if you wondered why your pickup was a little bit late, it was due to an accident. And also the fact they're still looking for what is the fastest and most efficient way to go through the routes. So I'm sure as they fine-tune their process, things will get a little better as the, their pickup season progresses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the new pickup and the new company, it's been my observation that they are ever so much more caring in that if a driver happens to empty a can and something from that can doesn't make it into the hopper of the back of the truck, the driver, I mean, the fellow that empties the can into the back of the truck, he will take a moment, pick whatever that is that fell onto the ground, and throw it into the back of the truck. Our previous trash collection company did not have their drivers instructed to do that, or the drivers did not do that, however, however that was working out. But the new company seems to be really caring, and they seem to be really good, and I'm very pleased personally.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we do have someone who's filled out for public discussion. Peggy?
May I repeat my name? Peggy Burleson, 23109 Harding, Hazel Park, Michigan. I have a couple complaints. First complaint I have is a small one, and if there's any way that I can help out, I would be very happy to volunteer. Our sign out here on John R. and Nine Mile, where it has Hazel Park City Offices, needs to be picked, cleaned up. We have organizations that I understand that come and do the gardens out there in the corner, so if there's any way possible that we could get the sign cleaned up and look kind of nice, it would be helpful. There's a lot of traffic there at Nine Mile and John R., and that is, the gardens is beautiful and that, but then when you see the sign, it needs to be cleaned up, please. Okay, the second thing I have is I have a house, not my house. There is a house on Harding. I am not sure of the exact address, but it is 23154 or 156. The house has been, well, nobody's working on this house. They have done some work. This has been, I would say, pretty close to a year and a half. I mean, they dug the basement, I guess it's supposed to be a basement, or put a foundation in it. They have caution tape across the whole front. They have a orange fence in front. I've been watching the porch roof, which has been on stilts ever since they started this. And I'm going to say, that roof has dropped a good 10 inches in this year and a half. And I'm really afraid of somebody getting hurt. I'm waiting for kids to start running around the house, because nobody's there. They have a trailer out in front that's been parked there many, many months. They've got dirt. It's, I think the lot is possibly a three lot. One lot has a big pile of dirt in the back. They have cement mixers back there, they have a truck back there, they have another pile of dirt. I don't know how long people have to fix up these homes. I know the council has been after homes that people have had three months, six months, maybe even nine months, but they've had to show that they are working when these extensions are made. So I would appreciate it, because it doesn't make my first block off of Nine Mile look all that pretty. Everybody keeps up their yards, except for this one right now. So I would appreciate it if it's, this can be looked into and get somebody moving on it, because they have put a foundation in. But there is approximately this wide all the way around. It does have some type of box every few feet holding the house up. So I don't know what...
I think we could send that to our administration, and they'll, they'll take a look at that. And as far as the address goes, given the description of the house, I don't think it'd be too hard to find.
It won't be too hard to find, so I would appreciate it. The other house that I've seen in Hazel Park that I have a concern about, because I know people have been taken it, and they've only been given a short time to get it, there is a house on Vassar in the first block that has tarps on the house or on the garage. It's been there for quite some time. And I know that the city has always got after people when they've had tarps put on a building, that it has to be fixed in a certain length of time. And I understand sometimes weather stops it, where it makes it a little bit longer, and I understand that. But these tarps on this house has been there for quite some time.
Which house was that, Peggy? Is it the same one?
It's on Vassar. It's in the first block, and I believe it is coming back south. It is the second house on the west side of the street.
It's not on Talis.
South of Woodward Heights?
Pardon?
South of Woodward Heights?
No, it's in the first block off of Nine Mile.
Okay.
Okay.
Peggy?
It's off of Felker.
Okay, south of Felker, okay.
I'm south of Felker.
Okay.
Peggy, isn't that Talis? It's Talis.
I thought it was Vassar. Maybe I'm wrong. Okay.
We'll find it.
It's Vass, it's Talis.
We'll find it.
Okay, sorry. Thank you very much. You guys do a great job. Hazel Park is a fantastic city, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public discussion, anything else anybody wants to bring to public discussion? Public discussion? Being none, we'll close public discussion. That brings us to the consent agenda, council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda and supported. Discussion, any additions, deletions? Being none, any dissension? No dissension to the motion. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are there any representatives from any of the businesses whose licenses we approve?
Would you like to come up and talk about your business a little bit?
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity. My name is Yolanda Merrill. I am the owner of Top Notch Printing, which is located at 24055 DeQuender. I have been in this industry for over 20 years, most recently resigning from my full-time job as an outside sales rep. And this business is new for me, as far as working this business full-time. And we do custom printing, and we print on any and everything, screen printing, heat printing, embroidery. We do full-color printing, banners, yard signs, bumper stickers, car decals. So we are a full printing, custom printing business, and very happy to be in the city of Hazel Park.
Thank you.
Welcome.
What are your hours?
We are open Monday through Saturday from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM.
Welcome to Hazel Park.
Welcome, yes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else from any of the businesses? Okay, we'll move along. Administration reports, item one.
Mr. Mayor, this is before you on second reading. This is an ordinance amendment dealing with dogs, cats, and dangerous animals, as well as provisions for animal cruelty.
Are there any changes from the first reading?
There is some clarification on the change for pest control, so that you can use poison for obvious pest control-type situations. So that was not... So that was not-